All right, I'll call the December 16, 2014 Everett Planning Commission meeting to order. Kathy, will you take role?
Chair Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver's.
Here.
Commissioner Sosin.
Here.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Kathy did a great job of typing up our meeting minutes from December 2, 2014 meeting. Have all the commissioners had a chance to review those and are there any revisions or comments? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as proposed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
All abstain, I was absent.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Sosin?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver's?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Chair Adams?
Yes. Commissioner Tisdale, do you mind if I start with you with any commissioner reports?
By only, so I observed the electronic sign demonstration and I continue to go to some meetings that Ed Peterson is arranging with the Trans TOD down at Everett Station. And at our last Puget Sound Air meeting, we were once again briefed about ST3 and how important it is to get it aligned and get it to Boeing's and those kinds of things. So that's it.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
No report?
No report.
No report?
No report.
And nothing tonight.
All right, no report for me. Staff, any report?
I would like to reserve for some comments for after the public hearing when you're done with the items on your agenda.
All right, I'll make sure I come back to you.
Okay.
Dave, anything to add at this point? All right. Any members of the public that would like to provide comment to the planning commission on an item that's not on our agenda tonight, we'd welcome you up to the podium to go ahead and provide those comments. If you could keep them to three minutes, we would appreciate that. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment at this point? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number one on our agenda, which is a continuation of the public hearing that we held on December 2 with regard to recommendations on revisions to the Port of Everett Waterfront Place Center project. This is a public hearing and just like we talked about it the last time we addressed this issue, if there's a conflict that needs to be disclosed or discussions that occurred outside of the open meeting format, we'd ask you to go ahead and disclose those at this point. Any additional disclosures the native commissioners would like to make? All right, hearing none. Just a little bit about procedure for this, we will be taking public comment tonight. We took public comment on December 2 and closed the public hearing, but obviously we'll be taking public comment again tonight based on the discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, staff, Alan and Dave.
Yeah, tonight we've asked the port to start the presentation to address the comments that you had had last week, I should say last meeting. And then staff will just respond as needed after they make a presentation, so.
Terry Batuella for the Port of Everett. We handed out a map that we can't display because I guess there's a malfunction of the equipment, but...
Yeah, just for the planning commission, we have no video boards tonight because they're out, so.
So we had five points that we just wanted to make really quickly. Thank you for the opportunity to readdress the board. First of all, we would like to withdraw our request for the electronic message board. We think it's very clear from your comments that this is not the time for this message board to go forward, so we are withdrawing that request. Second of all, we did hand out an exhibit. This is the exhibit labeled pedestrian pathway width diagram. And we realized after your comments that we had made some mistakes in the way we were describing the trail. We are anticipating doing the trail like it was in the Port Gardner Wharf Plan. There's one problem area and it's shown in this orange down here at the bottom, and it's the area around an existing building that if this plan goes forward, we'd be tearing down that building. We have to leave the footprint of that building, so the building would be built back in the same location. And it narrows down there, and that was what we were trying to describe very unsuccessfully. So we've been working with staff to resolve the descriptions of the trail, but this is the map that should depict it. So I think that will help to show that we do anticipate building the full esplanade around the whole project. There's just one area that it's not physically possible because of the restraint, but it would still have 15 feet of unobstructed access. So plenty of room for both pedestrians and bicycles. Third, we did a memo that you should all have where we looked through our plan. The Port of Everett has a very strong commitment to sustainability as evidenced by more than $30 million going into cleanup. We have, we are in a LEED certified building at the Port, or the Waterfront Place Central Building, and there are a number of things in our code that talk about our intentions there. And so following my brief comments, Denny's going to follow up and kind of describe those. Also, there was some concern raised about the box shapes in the view corridor study that were, you guys were thinking that were sort of depicting the roof characteristics. Those were just purely massing diagrams that are just done with a wireframe of the maximum heights to be built, not intended to reflect the character of the design of the roof. And so what we did is we have Jeff McClure here, our architect, to kind of just summarize the design guidelines that relate to the roof structures. The illustrations, although those are not actual design proposals, are designed using our architect and our landscape architect, working with an illustrator, to depict one possible scenario that the design would represent. So they're more characteristic of the type of design we anticipate in the project, not the massing study. That's purely to show what the maximum blockage could be. And then finally, I just wanted to clarify that we did provide the red line version of the design codes, and our intention was not to diminish the quality of the design guidelines. We think a lot of effort went into that in the Port Gardner Wharf Plan, and as I've talked about before, one of our kind of touchstones for the project has been to preserve prior planning. And so what we attempted to do is use that 2005 Design Guideline, which was really reflective of Port Gardner Wharf's very extensive already kind of designed project, and make it fit for Port Gardener, or for Waterfront Place. So our project has different districts, different character, different roads. We don't have alleys. So there was a lot of language that just didn't fit with the new plan, so that was what we tried to do. But we did try to keep our hands off anything that would diminish the quality of the project, and we hope that we were very successful in doing that. But we're happy to hear your comments tonight and try to respond to those comments to make the best possible project for the city. So, Denny, would you please talk about the sustainable design?
Thanks, Terry. Denny Dirksen, consultant to the Port of Everett for the project. And the basic message is the port has a very, very strong commitment to sustainable development practices for every aspect of the Waterfront Place project. It's one of the core, eight core goals that is cited in the supplemental design guidelines that you've received. In the subsections we called attention to in the brief handout we gave you through the staff and sections, subsections G and H, there's a substantial content there describing the basic approach to sustainable design, and it really creates the framework for the entire project, I think laying out the commitment to sustainable design, both for the site and for the individual buildings that will be constructed. And LEED or LEED equivalent type building construction is strongly encouraged throughout, you know, the project as part of that. And as Terry said, I think the port is walking the walk by the construction of its waterfront center building and some of its other recent projects to that LEED type of standard. And so I think that's just important to know. Also, the port has done a lot of other things in creating an overall environmental stewardship program for all of its port properties and operations, and we cited some of the examples there. I mean, certainly the incredible amount of money the port and effort the port's put into cleaning up a great amount of contaminated property and to the highest standards is part of that. But also, you know, we've got the state-of-the-art boat repair and boat repair yard at the port that there's no direct discharge. It's the gold standard that a lot of other marinas are trying to meet, and the port has done that several years ago. So it's another walk the walk kind of example of the port's commitment. They recycle all of their construction debris and all of their various projects and repair operations. They're really ramping up their use of both electric vehicles and other kinds of low, very low emission vehicles, and especially things that people don't notice, but a lot of the cargo handling equipment has been switched over that used to be pretty stinky diesel type of stuff, and now it's very high-tech kind of low E-type vehicles. So I think there's a good, you know, message there in that effort. And I think those are, and all these different programs are we doing with Orca, the Running Start Program that's based at the port, on port property, and EarthCore and some of the other programs out there to try to get young people and efforts going on to really help get the port into a first-class place for environmental stewardship. So those are the things I hope that you'll understand and appreciate that this is what the port intends to do with Waterfront Place as well.
Hi, I'm Jeff McClure, RMC Architects, design architect for the project. I want to talk just a little bit about the design guidelines, specifically about, in reference to the comment about the massing model, and Terry I think mentioned it very well, that massing model are intended to be just that, massing, just to show what the impacts of a totally built-out site design might look like, but not necessarily intended to show the architecture or the articulation on the building. There are a number of references to that in the design standards and the design guidelines, and I know that you have spent some time between now and our last meeting reviewing these design standards. And you've noticed that the document is broken into several sections, starting from more of the macro or the neighborhood design, and then gradually through different subsections, working more and more into the detailed design of the building. So I think that it really starts to encompass all of the layers that make a neighborhood. It isn't just building materials, it isn't just building form, it's a multi-layer tapestry that really starts to build a memorable neighborhood feel. Document starts with the neighborhood level, gets into the public realm, and then gradually gets down into site design, building design, and then specific buildings within the district for the various types of uses, being marine-related, commercial, residential, all of those different types of buildings, buildings that we would expect to see within this district once it's built out. If you're to look specifically for references to roof forms, because I know that that was the specific question, you'll find that on pages 83 through 87 of not the red line document, but the actual hard document itself. So if you take a look at the actual document, the one that has the pictures in it, this specifically sections G and H talks to building design. And it starts on page 83 with references to building height and massing, and stretches into the more detailed building typology. But you'll notice a lot of repeating language there about an emphasis placed on visual diversity, visual character. These are the kinds of things that we're trying to incorporate throughout this document to create an interesting and lively atmosphere pedestrian experience for people that are not only looking down on this property, but experiencing it from the street level. So we think that even though we're not saying you must have, for every 30 feet, you've got to have a mansard roof or something like that, we're encouraging the kind of diversity that will give designers some inspiration, giving them some operating room to work within. So I'll leave it at that, and then you can ask specific questions if there are more related to the building form.
That concludes our remarks. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Staff doesn't have any comments unless you have questions for us. We presented some information in the packet that we sent to you, including a revised resolution. And so with the materials that have been provided, we're really here just to respond to whatever additional concerns or questions you may have, make sure that you have the information you need to be able to make a decision tonight.
One of the questions that came up at the last meeting that maybe you could cover briefly is, we have the set of design standards and then we have the supplement to the design standards. Obviously, we've had them and we've been reviewing them, but could you address that briefly, just to make sure we have that clarity?
Well, the original 2003 standards and then the added 2005 standards will be merged into one document, and so there will be one standard at that point. And even though they're a little bit different format from the beginning to the end, and the intent there is to have a document that is seamless and can be used by developers and architects who will implement the project.
Okay. Commission, comments, questions at this point?
So one thing that I found helpful regarding the roof forms was not mentioned, but I wanted to point out a particular page for my fellow commissioners. So it's in the non-redlined copy, so that's Exhibit 10 called Design Standards and Guidelines. Page 20 pretty succinctly describes what's not allowed, and I know one of the concerns that was mentioned before was the appearance of flat roofs, and it says right there that that's, they're not allowed. So page 20 are some of the standards, not in text, it's written like code, so it's pretty easy to see. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Other questions, comments at this point before we take public comment?
I for one appreciate the red line version, although there's a lot of red in it, it's, was helpful for me. And a question I had in particular was, there's a reference in the document to the width of sidewalks at different locations. And in some of those locations, it talks about a clear area of 15 feet or 12 feet. On page 24 of the red line, on the Street Master Plan, it talks about interior streets and general circulation streets, that there would be an eight-foot sidewalk. And I'm wondering if the same approach applies to the eight-foot sidewalks, that that would be eight-foot clear of any car overhangs for the parking and other architectural features that might be on the buildings. My concern is that we have, when we talk about a sidewalk width, whether it's the large pathway or the internal circulation sidewalks, that we're talking about a clear area for people to walk. So I just want a confirmation that when it talks about an eight-foot sidewalk, it's a clear eight, a full eight feet, and it's not encroached upon by either building architectural features or overhangs from parked cars.
And to actually add on to that question, I think on page 29 of the red line version, there was also originally a requirement for five feet of that to remain clear, consistent with what you're talking about, and that was deleted. So that was a, to follow up, I think with those two, I have kind of a similar question. Is there any clarification we could get from the port or from staff on that?
Yeah, the simple answer is the intent would have, would be to have eight feet clear of sidewalk.
Thank you.
I think I'll just, I can probably gather up all my comments at one time and, you know, maybe after we take public comment, I can run through them in about a few minutes.
Okay.
And I appreciate the responsiveness of, you know, and the integrity with, you know, with which you've made efforts to address all the comments that we've had. I'd like to continue that dialogue, thank you.
Great. Could I just make one clarification on that eight foot, that it would be clear of any sort of bumper overhang or any sort of building overhang, but of course, there would be streetlights and potentially some landscape elements like street trees that would fall, that you would typically see in that, but I just wanted to make sure that it wouldn't include encroachment from automobiles or encroachment from any sort of buildings.
Okay. Along with it, just as a clarification, I noticed that some of the tree grate requirements were removed. Will all the trees have tree grates on them?
That would be the intent.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, good.
In the second set of design guidelines, they had already gone so far as actually to fit, to select all the products that they would be using. We don't even know if those products are available, and they don't match the characteristics of the new neighborhoods. So wherever it specified a specific thing, we took that out because we don't, we may, we have a new landscape architect and we will do a different thing, but we will use the same quality of materials that, but where they, they had actually used this as a building, you know, guide, and they'd actually selected catalog numbers and that kind of thing, we took those things out, and so the grates was an example of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Help me understand, the flat roof is a flat roof, I'm Norwegian, okay? Is, most of the new buildings have a flat roof, but it has an angle to it?
So let's talk about flat roofs. A lot of times when people talk about flat roofs, they're not dead flat, but have a low slope to them. And I just pulled up the reference on page 20, and what that does say is flat, unembellished roof lines. And so I want to make a distinction on that. It's very common in commercial construction to have some what we call low slopes, which are a very low-slope pitch, in order to accommodate drainage. And I think the specific reference here is that there won't be, there won't necessarily be no low-slope roof lines here, but the point here is that they would be embellished. And they would be embellished with cornices, with detailing, with mechanical screens, screening all equipment and things like that. So of course, it will be up to the judgment of the reviewing parties and the planning director to say that this is embellished, this is a sufficiently embellished roof line, and of course, it will be the product of study with CAD modeling and that sort of thing. So, so I think, I just wanted to make that clear, and hopefully that meets your expectation. And certainly, some of the imagery that you've already seen in terms of the artist's concept of what the building, the character would look, would have low-slope, flat roofs on them, but they're embellished with parapets, cornices, and then the roof screen around them to make them look acceptable and interesting.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
I had one more. On the removal of the signage, how, what's the plan to get folks into the core of Mama's Cheese Company or Grandma's Chocolate or, I mean, I look at Marine Village, Marina Village, and, you know, some of the boutique shops and things that were there, they struggled with trying to get enough people to make them work, and now we have a sleep center and a vision center, and I'm not opposed to any of that, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, even to guide some folks to the port's office, if you talk or remind them that it's by Scuttlebutts because it's frequented, so Terry, how?
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, the South Marina has retail way into the site, and we have, by our mix of uses, we'll bring the retail, that's year-round retail, to the highway area. It won't be so far into the property. I mean, we have, we'll have marketplace and we'll have neighborhood retail, but we won't have our key retail area that far into the site. Also, we've sent, we spent $600,000 over the last year on wayfinding signs that were approved by the city. We have been actively trying to reduce the number of A-boards and other kinds of illegal signs that our tenants like to put out, and we'll continue to do that. Our plan for, because we do have the gateway sign that was intended to be the electronic message board, we're going to have some artists come up with something to fill into that because we think we've already covered the name of Waterfront Place on both the two gateway elements. So that's how we plan to use that, and we'll continue to work within the code to promote the businesses within our site. But we, we feel that this is not something that would be seen as a positive by the community at this time, and it is in our, you know, it's our desire to please the community with our project, and so we just feel it's best to withdraw that request.
Thank you. Terry, while I have you up there, just to clarify, in the report that we received from the port in our packet to the commission, it was a little bit of a, there's a revision in the report that we received today, and I think it had to do with the 10 versus 15-foot path that went around in that orange portion on the map you gave us today. Could you clarify that the change, is it, is it 15 that goes around there now? Is that what the revision is?
It says 15, so it's 15. Is this, it's 10 around the yacht club?
Yeah, there's one little area that's...
I'm not the engineer, so...
Okay.
So this map is incorrect?
I think it didn't say 10.
It says 15.
Yeah, what it says is, red is pedestrian pathway with less than 15 feet.
Okay, so how wide is this area?
And that was determined to be...
I just add a little comment, Dennis Dirksen again. Graham and I have both gone out there with tape measures, and there's parts of the walkway that absolutely, it's kind of the overwater portion, if you've been around the outside of the yacht club building, and it, it varies. And it's less than 15, it's down to 12 in some areas, but then there's one area that's pretty tight with a stairway from the second floor, the yacht club comes down and so on, and it gets, narrows down to just a little under 10 for a short distance. So I think the wording of less than 10 in at least some areas around that, that area is probably the best description, but that helps the commission make a understanding of this.
Okay. So that's a little bit different than the report, we probably want to make sure that gets updated as it, as it goes through the process.
Go with the one that's in the packet.
Okay, the first one that we get is the more accurate then. Okay. Great, thank you, Terry. Any other questions, comments from the commission before we take public comment? Okay. Proceed with taking public comment. I have three individuals signed up to speak tonight. If you'd like to speak tonight, we have forms over by the door, and if you'd fill one of those out and pass it up to me. We'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, but we'd like everyone to speak who wants to speak. So I will start with Annabelle Smith. You come up to the podium and give us your, your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Well, my name is Annabelle Smith, and my mailing address is 3007 Rucker Avenue 221. My actual address is, I live in the Marina, the North Marina. I have for 12 years. I have three concerns tonight. First, the only sign I found about this meeting was hidden on the south side of 40414th, and it was for the last hearing and was never updated with tonight's meeting date and time. So I have a question about that. The second, the port speakers all boasted how the project honors the history of Everett with street names, areas, a clock, a memorial, how they are making space for what remains of our small but loyal fishing fleet. But the 107-year-old Everett Yacht Club, which has occupied the proposed site of the Waterfront Hotel for the past 50 years, will be forced out and left in limbo. The Everett Yacht Club was instrumental in establishing the Grand 14, a correlation of the oldest and largest yacht clubs in Puget Sound. Members include Seattle, Olympia, Tacoma, Bremerton, and Edmonds. As part of the Grand 14, we share many activities representing Everett and our club in the Seattle Opening Day Boat Parade, Tacoma Opening Day Boat Parade, and many other events. As part of our membership in the Grand 14, we're required to host at least three events a year, which bring officers and members from the other clubs to Everett. None of the port's latest suggestions... given to EYC as a new location, address this vital need or provide space for the other 100 or 200-person events that occur throughout the year. Even Edmonds understood the time-honored tradition of having an active Grand 14 club and worked with their club to establish a new site in their building. The Grand 14 yacht clubs are family-oriented. They promote safe boating, education, community service, boating destination cruises. Our club has boats from 20 feet to over 70. Young families to experienced retirees. Members from all economic, religious, ethnic backgrounds join together for a love of boating. This is a living historical organization that's being trampled in the port's new salute to Everett's historical past. Third, when presenting the available new numbers of parking spaces, I didn't hear anybody mention the over 400 current spaces that will be eliminated by new construction. Those spaces are used by current marina residents when they come to load and unload their boats. I complete, yeah. They haul crab pots, fishing gear, provision, coolers, bedding, garbage back and forth every time they go out. And in the summer months, tenants are hard-pressed to find parking now. The picturesque marina tenants will be fighting with pedestrians, shoppers, and bikes to find parking and get to their boats. Their current tenants warrant more consideration before giving the port a stamp of approval to add even more 700 new tenants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Victor Harris?
Mr. Chairman, it is not, and was not my intent to blindside the port with some of tonight's comments. They may have been better considered at some of the public forums, which I was unable to attend. I believe the Port of Everett works for citizens and the real partners in building a better future for our community. Victor Harris, 3017 Lombard, Everett, Washington. Mr. Chairman, my comments have slightly changed because of the earlier presentation tonight, but I'm going to plow on anyway with what I have. Does the Port of Everett need a 60-foot electronic sign? Considering the location of the port, drivers, for the most part, are on West Marine View Drive for very deliberate reasons, to access the south end of Grand, the Navy Base, or the port. The effective reach of such signage is limited to people who are on West Marine View Drive for a purpose. There remains the difficulty of finding the port in the dark, even as visitors don't recognize the proper entrance, depending on their destination. Attempting to locate a destination for a 6:00 AM engagement in mid-September remains a challenge. Properly locating an entrance sign with sufficient illumination is a critical component of making the port accessible and welcoming. Some of this confusion should be eliminated when the port has a series of recognizable landmarks and a presence visible from West Marine View Drive. Earlier this year, I spoke about light pollution and instituting a cap on how much light is emitted from the city. I believe we need a plan to reduce our overall contribution to light pollution, a problem that is exacerbated with wet surfaces. Because of my own issue of eyesight, excessive lighting can be problematic. If I say a sign is too bright, that's my opinion. I find it disconcerting that the results of the 20 November 2014 sign test seem to lack any measurement of lumens or brightness at 50 feet or at the top of the bluff. Perhaps these standards should be defined so that citizens better understand the impact of what they are sensing. These standards should be designed for any sign. I'm not limiting my comments to the port. While the question addresses electronic signage, someone mentioned red herring at the 2 December 2014 meeting. The distraction, the distraction of the sign overrides real concerns of how much total light is to be emitted from 65 acres of waterfront place should be of great concern. The impact on residents on the bluffs from the unconstrained lighting on the wharf and the impact of light on the night aquatic life should be considered. This point goes to design standards. Leaking construction is an essential part of moving forward in the 21st century. But serious consideration must be given to call for low-impact lighting. My concern is the amount of light that will reach the water, drawing marine life to an area where they would be at risk and unprotected from predators. Consideration should be given to constructing facilities with strong solar components. One attractive building in Spokane is, for 1980, an efficient building. 18 stories that reduces demand for interior lighting and additional benefits, of which I've included a copy of their, their benefits, again, from 1980. Its construction and energy system should be considered. With the intent to draw patrons to the waterfront, trash disposal is a concern. The port should include big-belly trashcans with built-in compactors for reduction in servicing needs. And for collection of solar power to power nearby lights for additional savings. The city of Everett parks like this equipment. I'm aware of a big belly at Lyons Park and understand there are others in the city. Doing the same old, doing things the same old way is not a practice we should be utilizing for the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you very much. Right. Hugh Hall?
Hugh Hall, 5801 88th Street, Southwest Muckeltoyo. I'd like to address you tonight as, from a couple of different vantage points. One, I've been an automobile dealer since 1989 in Everett. I'm a very happy customer of mortgage and the repair facilities at the port. And I've had an opportunity over the last number of years to build some buildings and deal with our planning department. So I believe that Everett needs to enhance our brand by approving this project. As a business here, we spend tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands, trying to attract business from outside of our city. Big part of our market is the shoreline all across the end of Lake Washington. And I think I speak for all businesses. It's expensive to do that, and it's very hard to get people to drive north to Everett. They don't have familiarity with us. We don't have, right now, the fine dining that Seattle can offer them and Edmonds can offer them. All of these things bring people to our community. Something like this would enhance our brand dramatically. I was here last week, or at the last meeting, and listened to your concerns. And I can't imagine what you must go through looking at conceptual plans like this and trying to figure out every angle of it. But I want to share with you my experience in dealing, in building in the city of Everett. And unfortunately, I've had dealings in surrounding cities that weren't quite as pleasant as dealing with our planning department. But we have built a dealership. We've remodeled a dealership. We have a parking garage that is about a third of the way done now. And in every case, we found it to be a collaborative effort, where our discussions began long before we submitted final plans, long before we were waiting to get a permit. A lot of the obstacles that would have held us back and held us up, that all of us hear from other people complaining about in business, "Oh, I can't get through planning. I can't get a permit." A lot of those things were out, got out of the way. This parking garage that we're working on now, I'm dealing with the same people that I dealt with when I built the Kia dealership, which, by the way, I was in front of this group, and they were talking about the waterfront place project back then, just a different one. They're the same people, and they've delivered on great projects in our city. And I would ask you tonight to consider investing in the confidence of the team at the Port of Everett and in the planning department, and approve this and move it to the next level with the confidence that they'll deal with the hurdles that are going to come up. Because I'm sure there's hurdles that we haven't recognized yet. But when we look around our city and see what we've built, I think they're very good at dealing with those things. And I would encourage you to vote to move it to the next level tonight.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Laney McMullin?
Laney McMullin, 1332 Grand Avenue. But also the Executive Director of Economic Development for the City of Everett. And I've been in that position for 13 years now. And I have never once stood in front of this body to address them about anything. Part of that reasoning is, is that I trust the process so much. Something that looks good to me. I have one set of eyes and a limited base of knowledge, and, and I trust that you are the experts and know what a process the mayor goes through to appoint you. So it is always to my advantage to let this process go without my influence, even though most of the projects you review are projects I have had a heavy hand in making happen or recruited them. But I've never stood here before. But I feel like I can't let this one go by because more than any other project that I have involved, involved in in the last 13 years, or I will be involved in, in the duration of my time, whatever that is left, that has the potential of rising all tides in the city of Everett is this particular project. Now, I am concerned, as you are, that it is a project of quality with good design standards. True disclosure would tell, I would tell you that my house sits directly above this project. I'm going to have to look at whatever the roofs look like, bad or good. So I am not suggesting that you compromise in any way. Here's what I am here to tell you. That the paradigm of economic development and how it works is very different than what it was even 13 years ago when I came into this position. 13, 15, 20 years ago, we lived in a world where businesses chose where to locate based on either tax incentives or natural resources or thoroughfares of transportation hubs. They located, and then the workforce moved to them. That's how the economic, economic process of our whole nation has gone for years and years and years. And about 20 years ago, it began to shift to a much different paradigm, whereas everybody didn't move to the jobs, which had located because of some natural resource or transportation or incentive reason, but where the businesses started moving to the places where the talent base or the workforce wanted to live. And that concept has grown and grown and grown with the percentage of knowledge-based workforce that now exists in the United States. And even we talk about ourselves as a manufacturing community. I would tell you that even, even Boeing is a knowledge-based business now. It doesn't, we don't do things the same way. Technology has changed our workforce from a blue-collar base to over 50% of a knowledge-based workforce. And here's what we know about the knowledge-based workforce. They will live anywhere they want to live. They will choose. An engineer coming out of school can decide if he wants to live here or in Boston, or in Paris, or in Dublin. The only thing that we have to compete with all of those great places, not just Seattle, is the amenities and the quality of life that we offer that workforce. Now, I love Everett just as much as you do. We've been strong on jobs, and we, in the past, have been short on quality of life. We've been given, God-given advantage, right? We sit in a place where there are vistas all around and access to outdoor activities within 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 40 minutes, depending on what you like to do. But in, in terms of urban amenities, we have some catching up to do. This piece of port property is our time to catch up. It is our time to bring in an amenity where a knowledge-based workforce will want to live. It's going to provide us with the kind of housing inventory that the knowledge-based workforce wants to live in. It's going to provide us with craft industry spaces for employment of today. I need this development. The City of Everett needs this development. We need a quality development. But I think the port has in place, at this moment, the folks to bring this home in a way that will change our city for the better like no other project. So I urge you to be your wise selves. I've watched you work for a long time. I know that you'll make good decisions. And consider this to be, as presented to you, one of the most important things that will ever happen in the city of Everett. And I urge you to move on this in whichever wise way you want to quickly because we are trying to catch the drift of a market and the interest of, of developers who are keenly awaiting. So with that, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Those are all the speakers that I have signed up today. Would anyone else like to provide a public comment? All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion from the commission to close the public comment for the public hearing?
I move to close public hearing.
And I will second that.
Kathy?
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Surtison?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Sosson?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverz?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Chair Adams?
Yes.
Staff, like to respond to any of the public comments? One that stuck out that I thought maybe you could respond to was just the notice part of this. We've had a number of workshops and two public hearings. But I assume we've gone through the typical notice requirements.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department. Yes, the notice requirements for a continued public hearing, we are not required to repost a site and apologize that we didn't do that for the person who spoke earlier about the sign still talking about the December 2nd hearing. But we did meet our legal requirement by continuing the public hearing at the hearing on December 2nd. One of the reasons that we meet in this building now is so that we can televise the planning commission hearings, and those are available for rebroadcast on the city's channel. And so we think that we've got a bit more public visibility of these meetings, even though we may not get the big crowds some nights, based on, on being able to televise this on the city's cable channel. But we have met our legal notice requirements.
And then, assuming this advances through the planning commission tonight, the resolution that comes out of the planning commission would go to the city council in January as a recommendation, and then the public process would continue there, correct?
That's correct. Correct, and we will provide notice in the same manner that we did for the original December 2nd hearing of the planning commission in advance of the city council hearings.
Okay. And then there were a couple issues that were raised, the yacht club and parking spaces. I wasn't sure if, actually, if the port would be, could respond to that, that'd be great, so.
I'd be happy to. Actually, in, when I came to the port last year, they, they have put me over both the property and the marina because they want one person to be, have the responsibility to make both businesses successful. So I'm actually responsible for the marina. As part of that work, I had, early in my tenure with the port, met with every legacy group in the port to try to figure out how this, what their future plans were and how our plan can, can be molded to support them. And the yacht club was one of those groups. In fact, the yacht club set up a subcommittee to meet with me, and I've been meeting with them on and off over the last year. We have worked with them to understand the challenges that they have. They actually are in a building owned by the port[1747.81] They actually are in a building owned by the port that we actually took over ownership from them when they went through a bankruptcy. And we have a below-market rental rate for them, but that facility is really falling down. It really needs to be replaced. So we worked with them to develop three different alternative scenarios for how we can prolong the success of the yacht club. We definitely want the yacht club to continue. We also have the Muckletillo Yacht Club at our marina, as well as the Milltown Sailing Club and a lot of different groups. But the yacht club, the Everett Yacht Club is very special. And so we talked with them about three different alternatives, and they've been looking at those alternatives. One of them would be to work with the future hotelier. Another would be to develop a site on the South Marina pier, which is where most of their members have their boats. And would help us to create more of an activity center on the South Marina. But they would have to raise a substantial amount of money for that. So we're, they're also, they also can use the Marina Clubhouse at the Warehouser or work with one of the hotels to create a joint facility. And they are working through that process. So we definitely want to support the yacht club. We support them in their events. We meet with them regularly and we definitely want to see them there for another hundred years. And on the parking, there is, we did a thorough parking study. We updated the parking study from Port Gardner Wharf, and we actually had two different consultants look at parking. We have over-parked, reserved parking for the Central Marina on the Central Pier. It's the parking lot adjacent to those piers in the Central, which would be reserved. We haven't finalized a strategy. We don't know if that would be like gates or permits or how that's all going to work. We'll be working with Walker Parking to finalize that. But we definitely have set aside more than sufficient parking according to two separate parking consultants and the previous study. So I guess that's three, enough parking for the marina.
Okay. Thank you very much. Discussion, questions, comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I guess it's sort of a point of order since we have a full commission here tonight. Our alternate is voting. I'm just wondering if we need to make a note of that as we proceed with this resolution for this project. I don't want our vote to be in question.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, obviously we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Okay. Questions, comments?
I agree completely about the excellence of our planning department and also the current port team and believe there's a deep resource there and willingness to bring the best possible project forward. However, we can't guarantee that all of these players will be sitting in these exact seats in the years to come. And the written word that we vote on and develop or suggest as recommendations tonight and then push onto City Council at some point is really what the citizenry will live with as the framework for the project. So while the process, I think, has been kind of tedious with talking about how much given footage there is at a particular location around, you know, and the nitty-gritty of roof pitches and all of that, I think that it is warranted and justified. And I think the citizens of Everett benefit from having a long and sort of magnified look at what the various specifics are of this plan. I think it's in everyone's best interest. So that is sort of a long-winded preface prior to a question, which is about the area on Exhibit 16 that shows where the compromised area is wrapping around the project. And my concern bringing the width up at our earlier hearing was a safety issue. And this seems to me to be another area that is worrisome in terms of mingling tricycles, bicycles, pets, walkers, and so forth. So I would like to ask the port what sort of Plan B might be for safety issues, you know, as people are passing by a less than ten-foot width on the west side of what is now the yacht club building? And whether there's been any thought to an alternative bike route or a walking-only section along that way? It seems to me that coming around a ninety-degree corner into that compromised width could be problematic. So that's one question I'd like to have some thoughts on. If anybody, if anybody wanted to respond to that, thanks.
Thank you. It's our understanding that twelve-foot is the standard that's common, so we think that, we don't think that it's going to present a, like a safety issue, with the exception of the stairway, which when we do tear down the yacht club building, we are not going to allow that stairway to go back in that location. So we feel satisfied that this is a good, a good solution. But we also want to point out that there are other areas. This actually is right around where the park is. There's sidewalks and a parking lot and other areas that are also accessible if someone wanted to go a different direction. But we think it's important to preserve the sidewalk all the way around the outside of the pier. So there are options, and we do feel that we're within the accepted standard with anything a twelve-foot.
So Terry? If the stairway were to be removed, the minimum width along that orange section is twelve feet?
That's my understanding. Without the stairway, it's twelve-foot. Well, we'd have to.
You might be able to. I haven't, we didn't measure for that, but the possibility is there. That's a problem section.
Yeah. That's the area that it does get narrow is where the stairway is. So if the stairway were gone, it would be the same width as everything else right there because it's a square or rectangular building. But the stairway is just kind of an awkward thing that comes down from the upper floor. So we'd like to see that go away.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up, follow-up to, on that question? So I actually run this path all the time. I really appreciate what the port has done, but I have to tell you that when my family runs together, it takes a double-wide stroller, a single-wide stroller, and there's usually a dog in tow. So we take up the whole sidewalk. And just given the corners there, if someone is on a bike riding, I would share the same concern that Michelle had. And I could tell you what I do right now is I cut in front of the yacht club building there. And just looking at the site map right now, I don't see a very viable path through that. And I imagine other people that are either running or pushing strollers or riding bikes probably do a similar thing. So I would point that out, that you may consider that people would continue to do that in the future on the site plan. So certainly I wouldn't take the load of children and dog that we do around the corners there around the building, so.
So the yacht club building is coming down?
That's our plan. I don't know.
So it wouldn't be out of line to put a condition in the process that says that when the yacht club building comes down, you establish a fifteen-foot pathway around there?
Yeah, we need to use the same footprint in order to preserve the building structure.
Well, you'd like to preserve that footprint, but you don't need to preserve that footprint.
Well, we could lose the hotel and the restaurant, yeah.
You would?
Yeah.
You couldn't move it back just a couple of feet?
No, because it's over water and we couldn't, it's, this part right here is not, it's not fill, it's actually over water.
Right.
So we have to leave it, and it's my understanding, we have to leave it in the same spot.
Because of permission?
I mean, one option would be to, on the sidewalk that goes around the Milltown Loop is to create another cutoff area that could, there could be a pathway there. I'd rather not have that go through the parking lot because this will be a privately-developed parcel. But I do think we should continue to keep the esplanade, whatever we can around the edge, so that if someone's wanting to go that way. But I mean, we're kind of constrained with the land form there.
Commissioner Sosson, one of the things I kind of felt like you were maybe suggesting was a requirement, and then maybe something for the port to just consider that people only walk through that area, so that way we don't see a safety concern with.
Everett the bikes or something?
I hadn't thought through it to the very nth degree, but it looks like a collision area for, to me. And, you know, safety is a primary concern. So whether people were required to dismount their bicycles and walk that section, I just don't know what level of congestion to anticipate except the very highest. So, you know, I don't know if, I thought that an alternate route for bicycles that eliminated them from that westward side, or I don't know what the ultimate solution will be, but just want to draw everyone's attention to that being problematic from a safety standpoint. And twelve feet does sound like a lot, but Chris, your, your family, I bet, takes up the full twelve, going all in one direction, not accounting for any traffic that might be approaching from the opposite, so.
I think the port would be open to that, to have a diversion route for bicycles that cut across the corner in front of the hotel site.
Okay. Like, it's a great note. If the port would consider that, I sure would appreciate it, so. I'm also willing to walk my, my strollers and dog through there too, so. But I think a diversion route would be good.
Well, I, for one, think that this pathway around the project is, is a very important public element. And we've already lost one public element, and that was Thirteenth Street. So I would be of the opinion that I think the port should take another look at this and come back with a design that provides that kind of pathway all the way around the project.
Are there any constraints on expanding that walkway that staff is aware of?
I'm not personally aware of that. I know that there are some challenges with structures over water, and I'll ask David, perhaps, he's got a better background on this than I do. But I know that there are challenges with replacement of an over-water structure in a different location, and I don't know the details, though, of what ecology would require us to do in that event.
Yeah, you can replace existing buildings over water and repair them. Couple of examples are the, down in Ivors, which is down on the Muckletillo, was hit very hard by a storm and destroyed, and so they were able to rebuild there and put structure down into, you know, under it that would maintain it's overwater. Ray's Boathouse down in Seattle, which has, you know, areas looking out over the water. It had a major fire and they rebuilt. So you can rebuild existing buildings. The issue is going over water and fisheries and such, there, it's very difficult to add shadows over water because of salmon and such, and so you can't increase it at all. You're limited to what is existing there. And so I think that's what Denny is referring to, in that, you know, you have an existing structure, you need to rebuild the existing structure because you don't have an ability to expand over the water, so.
Okay.
Well, I'm a realist, understand this is not going to go anyplace. But I still feel that, again, if it's important to the public to have access around this property, then you do that by providing appropriate access. And in my mind, that's a facility that's a full fifteen feet all the way around the property. And that, if that means that you have to modify the site plan and move buildings and things of that nature, that's part of the consideration. That's part of the balance. And that's a part of identifying what the priority is for this city. And if it's to allow the buildings to be constructed, and that's the priority, that's fine. I think the priority should be to make sure there's good, safe, public access.
I, I agree in principle with Commissioner Sand. However, I would be satisfied or with the development of a pedestrian-only section provided there was an ample bicycle bypass that somehow eclipsed this southwest corner. And I grew up in Minnesota where we have land of a million lakes in the city. Those bike and pedestrian paths sometimes converge, but they are always zoned with walkers on the left and bicycles on the right and so forth, so that there's some segregation of traffic types and hopefully some better safety because of that. So if there was a, if there was a bicycle bypass that ensured in that narrow section, people wouldn't be mixing it up to their detriment, I would be satisfied with that. And, and don't feel necessarily that, you know, I would just want some assurance here in writing that that would be developed. I don't necessarily need to see it or can, you know, feel like it needs to be already on paper. It could be by the time it got to City Council, in my opinion.
Yeah. I have a graphic, which I'll pass around the port, just hand it and see. It's a, a one where we divert the bikes away from the shoreline but be, you know, inland from that and around the yacht club, so I'll just pass, one will give it to you. So you can see how the, how you could have bikes and if you were, had your kids and the dogs, you could go that way too.
Karen?
Yeah.
As a lonely bicyclist here, and I ride that every weekend, either a Saturday or Sunday, and have four, let's see, my granddaughter's seven and fourteen. And I don't know that the width is really an issue. We ride at Green Lake, we ride at Alki Beach. When it gets crowded, it's hard for everybody to see directions and see markings and those things. So I, I struggle a little bit with, you know, if, and you get these diversions and those things, and that all, it's all well and good on paper and it's all, but it's crowded. You're riding your bicycle or you're pushing your children. You're, you're not really paying attention to which direction or where you're supposed to go. I mean, Green Lake is a good example. You're supposed to go one way if you're walking and one if you're on a bicycle. And I have fellow bicyclists that disobey the rules, and you have fellow stroller and dog people that disobey the rules. So I would trust that the port would do the best. And, you know, it's, we're trying to, we're looking at a whole project here, and if we push things too far, my fear is, and it might seem like a simple and inexpensive to add a bicycle path, but, you know, the marketplace right now is, if we push too many constraints that cause the market ability for this footprint to be affordable, whether it's the stores, the shops, the boatyard, or whatever it is. So I would speak in favor of some sort of lines or some sort of things, but I really think that, you know, I sometimes will ride on the sidewalks in Everett, and it's safer than taking your life in your hands, riding on the roads certain days. So that's, that's my part about being a bicyclist. I, I think we all need to respect each other. And, you know, we all pay taxes, and my bicycle with my slim body is about thirty inches, and, you know, some of these strollers are four feet wide. And, you know, how's that all fair for public access and use and all of those things? So that's my two cents.
All right. Questions, comments on this issue or another issue?
Well, I guess I can launch into my series of comments and questions. I, I don't, I don't know that we're, you know, I'm kind of, I'm a person with a sense of urgency, and I've said, made comments like, "Let's strike while the iron is hot," and "Let's make haste." But on the other hand, I also feel that we have to seriously consider a number of these things before we, you know, I don't think we're on a deadline here. Somebody might be, but I'm a kind of a, I like to get it done, you know? I like to see it happen, you know, and make it happen. But if you, I think we have some questions here that, that might need, might, might require another. require another, you know, another pass at this. But anyway, architectural design, and then I'll go through a, a few, a few points here. And I think probably most of these will be directed at Mr. McClure, the architect. I didn't, you know, page 15 looks good, and I'm sorry, I'm going to apologize because we don't have this up on the screen, not everybody can see what, will be able to see what I'm talking about, but I'm looking right now at the attachment four, and page 15, good. Looks like we've got human scale worked into this, and the transparency requirements are good. I see canopies. I was kind of wondering about that minimum first-story height. Typically, on a mixed-use project in Seattle, we have to keep the first floor at about 13 feet to make room for structure, so we can have a minimum of 12 feet ceiling height in the first floor. And I didn't see it, I, I see it kind of, sort of suggested on page 16, which is kind of explaining the canopy, the canopy configuration there. It says, it gives you a range of eight to 12 feet for a canopy height. That's a pretty big range. You know, eight feet is pretty low, 12 feet's pretty good. But I think that, and this is, this may seem a little idiosyncratic, but I think that some of, most of us understand that when a, when a building, a commercial building has a very low first story, it look, has a kind of a cheap, it doesn't have a very, it doesn't have the feel of a streetscape. So, I'd like to see that first-story height, or that minimum first-floor ceiling height explained somewhere, if it isn't, maybe I missed it. Roof forms, I'm going to talk about roofs, since we've been talking about roofs. I don't really have a problem with a flat roof, just depends on how you do it. I'm not against flat roofs, it's just that when we looked at the massing study, I saw the big expanse of what looked like it could be a flat roof, and if you were to max out the site based on the limitations that you've, you had there, you know, just, just from a constructibility standpoint, it looked like you'd end up, you could end up with a, a large commercial building in the middle with a vast expanse of flat roof, which, you know, again, I, I'm not against, I'm not completely against that, it's just how you do it, how you handle it. If it was a green roof, I wouldn't have a problem with it. However, we also lost our 13th Street view corridor, so as you look down from above, at one point, you know, you had this canyon that was the view corridor, that's 13th Street. Now, it's just, you know, it could just kind of go straight across, although I see in the, in the, in the plans, you have some open space requirements and probably floor-area ratio requirements that have to be met. So, I guess just the treatment of the, how, you know, when you get to that, that maximum height, what, what, what happens when you get up there? And then, I did go through the, the roof kind of comments, or the roof section on page 20, and I saw, it says, "Commercial buildings shall include extended parapets and projecting cornices to create a prominent edge when viewed against the sky. Sloping roof elements are encouraged." And I, I would say, I don't, I don't really care for cornices much, and parapets, you know, when we talk about an embellished roof, it sounds like we're talking about parapets and cornices, and cornices look great on an age, you know, they, they come from ancient Greece, they, they come from the temple architecture of ancient Greece, and sometimes they look okay on a, a turn-of-the-century brownstone. But unfortunately, in contemporary buildings, what you see is a lot of these strip malls and big-box stores with cornices on them, and it becomes a kind of a, the, the architecture looks very much like, you know, it looks the same whether you're in San Diego, or, you know, Portland, Maine, or, you know, wherever you are, they, they kind of, it's just kind of that cheap, commercial treatment, which I, I, I fear that when you get that specific about the design guidelines, what we'll end up with is just the bare minimum, the lowest common denominator. And you'll have commercial developers coming in and building the cheapest building they can possibly cheap, cheapest building they can possibly build, but just barely meeting the minimum requirement. So, they'll be able to get by with that. So, I, I'm kind of having a little trouble with the unembellished, you know, a flat roof, there's nothing wrong with a flat roof, it's just how you do it. And when you say if it's embellished, it's okay, then you start kind of decorating, you basically, you put in a box, and you start decorating like you might decorate a cake, you know? And that would be unfortunate. I saw an example of, I think it was on page, page 98, there was a, an image of a building that has what could be considered a flat roof, but it, you know, it's a contemporary building, and it seems a little bit, you know, I mean, that might, that might be a flat roof, it might be a one-quarter inch per foot slope, or it might be a one-and-12 slope, but it's mostly a flat roof, you know, I mean, it just, there's some, it just seems to be a little bit of ambiguity there. So, and then barrel vaults, I don't know, I, I wouldn't, I don't really, you know, a barrel vault was a sort of a way of doing a roof at one point in time, but it's not really, I mean, I don't know, I'm looking at the imagery, and I see a barrel vault in there, and it doesn't really, I don't know, not, not, not doing, doing a lot for me. And then sustainability. I, I feel that, you know, I see a lot of, I see a lot of discussion on sustainability, and I understand the commitment to sustainability. And I think it was mentioned that the port is in a LEED-certified building. I am, I, I would like to know if that's really a LEED-certified building, or if it's what, what is being considered a equivalent LEED. Because, you know, equivalent LEED, they say, well, it meets all the requirements for LEED, we just didn't register it with U.S. Green Building Council and get the little plaque. I, I, I've seen that time, time and again, what other people consider to be a LEED standard, and it basically, you know, it's, it's, if it's, if it's convenient, we'll, we'll say it's, it's, it meets all the requirements for LEED Silver, but if it becomes a, a problem, then we'll just kind of, you know, we'll just say, well, let's not and say we did. And I'm not impugning anybody's integrity or anything like that, but I feel that if there was ever a, a need for true sustainability on a project, this would be the project that we should do it. I think that Mr. Harris's comments about light pollution are consistent with that. I think that there, the problem with, with saying equivalent to LEED, you know, and the language in the, in the, the resolution language says that if you go to, let's see, if you go to page 79, it says sustainability. Sustainable site design practices are strongly encouraged. And strongly encouraged, to me, that's, that's, that's about as, you know, that's about, I don't know, that's, that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything to me. I mean, it's like, oh, we really like you to do this, but you don't really have to. And it even say, it even says in the last sentence, "Developers may choose not to pursue, pursue LEED rating while still meeting the standards for sustainability consistent with these types of practices." You know, in my, in my estimation, this is what Commissioner Solson referred to as sort of an open-ended narrative. So, it might be LEED, I, I was suggesting LEED Silver, not LEED Gold or LEED Platinum, but I think that the thing about the LEED system is that there's a, an element of accountability, and it can be quantified and measured. And I'm sure that there's going to be people who don't like it, because it would be considered an annoyance, but I don't think, I think that the, the overall benefit to what we gain, I, I think that whatever, we even got that letter from the PUD that said, okay, well, multifamily developers, they're just passing the cost along to the tenants, you know, and they're not, they're not doing these sustainable, you know, energy-efficient buildings, they'd just rather just build a cheap building and let the, let the renters pay the, pay the electric bill. So, I think that, I, I, I don't know if, you know, I would, I said in the last meeting that I would propose an amendment to require that all the buildings and site improvements be, required to be LEED Silver. And I, I still intend to do that. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Any comments to, from staff? Anything you could provide with regard to the sustainability perspective, I think would be helpful, in particular, from my perspective, the language that's in here, how it would be used in working with a developer on a project that's proposed at some point, you know? It's strongly encouraged, how does that work into the conversation with a developer down the road?
Alan Giffen, planning staff. Commissioner Jordison is correct that encourage doesn't, is not a requirement. However, I think that staff's position is that rather than requiring designing to a LEED Silver standard, we are going to be dealing with sustainability in our comprehensive plan. We don't have a standard at this time for buildings to be, meet any particular standard of sustainability or energy efficiency, other than the state energy codes. But at such point, excuse me, at such time that the city takes a more comprehensive approach to addressing sustainability in the design of buildings, we would recommend not requiring a LEED standard, we would recommend encouraging that. We know that with this project, the port has already with the existing buildings, and just the cleanup of the site, and the way that they're developing the site, creating a sustainable type of design, and rather than force them into the LEED system, there are other equivalents that can be used that still address energy savings and a sustain, excuse me, sustainable design. So, I'm not an expert in LEED, I can't talk about the, that system. But I think rather than forcing that upon every building and every development, that we believe that we've had good success working with the port, and they're already taking that approach in the principles that are guiding the redevelopment of this property. So, until we have a citywide standard, I think it's a little premature to require a LEED standard of any particular level, whether that's Silver or higher.
Just, Dave Konig, planning staff. City council has also debated this issue when we were doing some energy work with them, and we received some money from the federal government, and the city did a, basically a carbon footprint of the city functions, not the city overall, but the city functions, and what we were doing there. And that time, they decided that they were not going to require developers to do a LEED standard, but that the city and its buildings would be a LEED standard. So, the new courthouse down here is LEED building and such. So, so the city council, at that time, when they were debating the issue if they should create a standard throughout the city for that, they, they decided not to at that time.
Okay. So, obviously, the port would have discretion on a developer that they're working with in deciding what standard might be imposed in a contract that they would have independent of anything that we're doing here, because they have site control at this point. So, there's that element to it also, and then the complication becomes, to some degree, that, that we haven't actually articulated a position in our comprehensive plan of what a standard would be in that process. Is that a correct summary of what you said?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting a citywide standard, I'm only suggesting it for this particular project.
Any questions or comments from the commission on that?
I just have four quick ones, and they're just my observations and comments. I, I've been involved with this process before joining the planning commission, and went to the stakeholder meetings, and I think Laney really hit it well, that the, there's quite a few things, the, you know, we haven't discussed today about the expanded access for the community in the new design, whether it's for the residents, or the visitors, or us people in the community. And I, I applaud the redesign on that, down to, you know, moving the warehouse or building and, and preserving it, and it gives access to people that have driven by it for a lot of years and wondered what it was and what it means. And now they'll be able to, you know, go in that project, or go into that building and have functions. You know, the way they use the Department of Ecology's flexibility on, on the, I think that was a good use of that tool, where they could move things around, so we don't have a bunch of straight lines of, of buildings and create some paths. The, the housing, it also helps the maximize that footprint, so, because market values are, are important. If this project's put together and, and it, and it's off-market, and we've got a bunch of buildings that are built and, and setting there, and so I, I, you know, that housing inventory, I think, is important as we grow as a city, and we look at the densities that Puget Sound Regional Council is putting forward to us, we need to make sure that, you know, that's, that's part of the city, but it's going to be a community in its own, and having that flexibility to have age, old, age, young, you know, handicapped, or any of those things, it, it's got all those elements, and I, I think that's, I think that's important. So, I'm, I'm pretty excited. All, all of us sitting up here probably have issues that we wish it looked different, but I think for the betterment of everything, I, I would applaud the port in their process. Again, attending those meetings, there was very little public comment of air and dislike and in most of the projects that I've seen in the past. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
All right. Other commissioner comments, questions?
I could ask this of city staff and your understanding regarding the residential uses within the 200-foot shoreline zone. The port is requesting 100-foot as the limitation, even though the site plan, the conceptual site plan that we're working with, has no buildings placed closer to the water than 120 feet, and most are at 150, 40, and 70. So, if we are to grant that entitlement, what will the heights be for any residential uses that they choose to build within that zone?
Dave Konig, planning staff, the, within 200 feet, the maximum height is 35 feet in this, in this document, but for the warehouse or building. So, yeah, which is 40-some feet, low 40s. So, that, that would not increase the height there, it just allows the use in that area.
Okay. And that is plus 10 for rooftop and pertinences over, you know, not throughout the whole roof, but there is the additional 10 feet granted with, throughout the entire project for screen pertinences above?
That's what the code reads.
Yeah, the code reads that way, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jordison, did you have a question with regard to the first-floor height that you wanted?
Yeah, there's, I, I was wondering if, if there was, in the design guidelines, a minimum first-floor height indicated?
Yeah. I'm not aware of that in this code.
Okay.
Yeah. That there is not a minimum in this code, yeah. We have it in the downtown area, but it's not a part of this code at this point, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think Mr. McClure said in the last meeting that he suggested that there, there could be.
Yeah, you might have, you can ask questions of the port and the staff.
The port have any, we're, we're talking Port have any, we're talking about the first floor height, if there's?
Ask me about floor height?
For the, for the first floor.
For the first floor, yeah. It's our intent that in commercial spaces on the ground floor that would have an elevated presence to it, that would be at least 12, 12 feet. I was looking through specific references in the code and I, I wasn't finding a specific reference to that, but it's certainly something that could be, could be included. But that would be the intent. And actually, if you were to review some of our building sections, or excuse me, section, site sections on some of the drawings that we provided, you'll note that those commercial spaces that are wrapped around the parking structure have an elevated height on that ground level for that purpose. So that's, that definitely is our intent.
Okay. I guess I've been hearing that this is the intent. It's our intent to do a quality project. And I'm not trying to be mean, but the word intent keeps coming up a lot. You know, this is our intent. And I, I think the only time my grandmother gave herself to use the, the HE double hockey sticks word was the road to hell is paved with good intentions. So I, I think we, we need to have a little bit more sort of black and white stipulation if, if it is the intent. Maybe it should be in the design guidelines.
Well, and maybe let me put a little finer point on it. If you read through it, there's repeated references on the ground floor entries that those would be more prominent in commercial spaces and things like that. And again, it depends on how specific we want this language to be, to have absolutely defined heights. Certainly that can be added. I, I don't want it, I don't want to give the impression that we're trying to keep this as loose as possible. Most of this document, I think you understood, was modeled after the one that was approved in 2005. As a matter of fact, a lot of the references in terms of the articulation of the roof are verbatim out of that document. And I agree, if that falls into the wrong hands, that can go in a direction that maybe you or I or others wouldn't, wouldn't find appealing. But I think it's also incumbent upon us to provide enough direction to give some diversity. So, so that we encourage some design inspiration because I think that will be the hallmark of a successful, a successful neighborhood. So I don't want it to appear, when I say intent, I don't want it to appear that we're trying to be squishy in any way. But we, but these are the things that I read into the code and we're going to have several, or excuse me, these design guidelines, we're going to have several opportunities to review these projects, both at the port level and at the city level to provide what we're talking about here. Granted, there may be, if this is a specific requirement, then that's something that we, we could provide. But I think it's inferred in here, but perhaps not strong enough for the commission.
Well, I think we're all, we all agree that, you know, you want to do a good project. The port wants to do a good project. The planning department wants to do a good project. But there might be, maybe a little too much wiggle room in some places that, you know, when the, when the money, when the money, the bean counters get involved with it, they'll say, well, why do we, you know, and I, I've, I've done projects where they, you know, I don't need, we don't need that, you know, it's not required. Get rid of it, you know? I don't want to pay for it. But this is one project that is, this is going to be our jewel, you know? This is going to be our flagship. This is going to be the one that, as, as the lady said, you know, raises the tide, you know, for the city of Everett. So that's why probably it seems like, you know, maybe we're interrogating you a little bit harshly at times. So.
No, not at all. And I can understand. We all read these things differently and I certainly understand some of the comments. There are a number of reference here, references here to high-quality materials. And I do think that there's a strong narrative in many of these sections describing what the intent is. Certainly, it's going to be, require some interpretation. But again, we, even though you look at the red markup copy and that there's a lot of drafts and edits, most of that is to kind of define the project that's currently in front of us. And it's just a reminder that the previous design guidelines in '05 were written for a very specific project that was largely designed. So when we took a new look at this, we wanted to make certain that, you know, we honored the fact that we have a master plan, a conceptual plan, but we're encouraging multiple people to come and develop. And so we need to strike that balance between giving enough definition to make sure that there is teeth, but also not being so restrictive that we can't honor a certain amount of design diversity. And so that's the balancing act that, that we're in. Maybe in some areas, we've excerpted pieces that some would like to see in, but it was our goal to make certain that we kept the overarching quality of the previous development, but written in language that provided a little bit more flexibility and diversity for many developers to come. And I think that that's the strength of this approach, is that it's not a single developer. We have multiple parcels of land, some of which that may be grouped into single projects. But we would intend that we have multiple developers with multiple aspirations, providing, again, that diversity word that I keep talking about, that I think will be a hallmark to a successful neighborhood.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the commission? Okay. We have a proposed resolution. I think, just to clarify, I think at the beginning of the meeting, you said we had a revised resolution. I think we're working off of the proposed one from the last meeting, correct?
Well, there is one, there is, we redlined it. So it was in the packet. It's the same resolution, but then what you had in the packet was, we showed some changes, which included taking the message sign out. We added an exhibit. There's a few other.
With the attachments from the, the prior packet?
Right, right, right. But it includes the 15 attachments from last time and an additional 16 one, which was the chart that was given to you, which is the trail around the, around the perimeter. So.
Okay. And I certainly don't want to stifle discussion among the commission, but maybe if we can turn our attention a little bit to that resolution and allow us to identify areas that we want to discuss in further detail, our motions that, that we'll either potentially be making, or if we get, ultimately put the resolution on the table with a motion, we can deal with amendments from there. So.
I am going to propose an amendment to require the site, all the site improvements and all the buildings to be lead silver. And if, if it dies for lack of a second, then so be it. But maybe at the point, we can vote on it separately, I think. But that's, that's what I plan on doing.
Would you like a motion to put the resolution on the floor so that he can offer amendments to it?
I think that'd be a great idea right now.
I'd like to move the resolution presented to us this evening with a few revisions. One is, let me start with the nitpicky stuff first. At the resolution, now therefore statement, the word commission needs to be inserted after planning. In the conditions attached, conditions of approval under C, general conditions, I can't find a 16. So since you've renumbered them once, I guess you get to renumber them again. It goes from 15 to 17 on my copy.
The one I have, it's attachment, it's attachment three to the packet today. And then it's on the last page, page 17.
Just talking about here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha. That needs to be changed. Okay.
And then I would like to include in my motion that exhibits eight and 16, which address the trail, both be amended to contain something roughly equivalent to the sketch that was passed around this evening, responding to the issue of diverting bicycles away from the narrowed portion of the perimeter trail as it goes past the existing yacht club building. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you for putting that out there.
And I'll second that motion with those proposed amendments.
I'd like to offer just a friendly correction to add to your motion on page three, number 14. The city uses the following factors to determine if an amendment to an approved, I think that should say PDO, is in the best long-term interest. I think it's just a.
Good catch.
So.
What was that? I'm sorry.
That's page three, number 14. Top line, it should be approved PDO.
Okay. Caught it.
Maybe we can get, if there's any other typos or friendlies, anyone wants to get out there? Okay. Okay. So we have a motion on the table with the proposed resolution, with the changes that have been outlined. Anyone like to address other issues for discussion or possibly for motion or amendment?
I'm going to go ahead and propose an amendment that the project, the buildings and the site improvements be required to meet the criteria for lead silver and to be lead certified with the U.S. Green Building Council.
Any discussion or second on the motion?
Discussion, please. I completely agree with the spirit of Commissioner Jordison's suggestion. However, I also value staff's input that singling out this project as much as we would like to at this point in time to levy an additional condition of lead silver is probably not appropriate, that we would be better served as a community to consider this on a citywide basis and regrettably accept the fact that the intent to design sustainably be the standard at this moment. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion or the proposed amendment?
I don't think you had a second, so.
Right. It's just more discussion and then obviously I'll just remind everyone we don't have a second. See if we get it. Okay. Second to the proposed amendment? Right. I share Commissioner Sosin's comments. I think it's a complex issue, but without a second, the proposed amendment dies. Other comments, questions, proposed amendments by the commission? Discussion generally about the issues. I know one of the things that I want to add is, I'm sure the fort, or the port feels like we've cross-examined you on a number of different issues. We've made you come back several times. I do appreciate the responses that you've had to our questions. I appreciate the red line that I got. I went through every single page of it. It was very helpful from my perspective. So I, I really do appreciate the time that you've taken. I do think this development is really important in this community. And I, I hope it goes forward and I hope it's one that's developed at a high quality. And I think there is, you know, when you talk about the intent of the port, you're a public agency. I think there's a lot of faith that the community has and you have site control now. You have a level of ability to control this as it moves forward in a unique way. And I hope you do that. So that was the, the one comment that I wanted to provide. So any other comments from anybody? Further discussion? We have a, a motion with some amendments and a second on the table. Any other final discussion before we go ahead and take a vote?
As Commissioner Stewart said, my alternative vote, are you going to deal with that?
Well, technically on roll, on the vote, we just won't call your name. Yeah. So we appreciate all the comments that you've had, though.
All right.
Okay. And I actually, you know, the other thing I want to add is, I really appreciate the commission coming back in a middle of December meeting that wasn't originally on the calendar to have this discussion. So I appreciate all the comments and questions and the quality of discussion that you've had. So thank you for doing that and being here today. So unless there's any other discussion from the commission on the motion that's on the table, not hearing any. Kathy, I'll ask you to take a roll.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Sosin?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Chair Adams?
Yes. All right. That concludes our one item on the agenda. I know staff had an issue that they wanted us to come back to after we got here. So Alan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Alan Giffen, planning department. Well, tonight being the last meeting of the year, it also happens to be the last meeting in the term of Commissioner Oliver's. And we have a little certificate of appreciation we'd like to offer him. I believe that the chair has that. I wanted to just make a couple of comments, though this is his second term. So he has completed 12 years' term. Sometimes we use euphemism, a term that sometimes might feel more like a sentence. However, want to really appreciate the value that Commissioner Oliver's has brought to our discussions over the last 12 years. And knowing Claire from before, he was a commissioner of, as a city staff person for a number of years, just tremendously enjoyed his expertise. And outside of his area of expertise, just as a citizen and a level-headed planning commissioner, has brought a lot of value to our discussions. And Claire, I want to thank you for what you've brought to the commission and value to the city.
Clearly, there hasn't been any good behavior. I didn't get any time off for that. You know, I'm not inclined to say a whole lot, but I have been in this role long enough to have served with a great many planning commissioners. And there have been some pretty darn good planning commissions as a body that I've had the privilege of serving with. And frankly, this current group ranks right up there in my estimation. I obviously don't always agree with all of you, but I think the level of discussion discourse is superior to any that I've been engaged in. And I appreciate that you all bring your viewpoints and you share them and they get discussed. And, and sometimes it means we wrangle a little longer than I'm comfortable with on issues. But I think it means that we make better recommendations to the city council than they would otherwise get from a body that's kind of all of one mind. So I appreciate it. And keep up the good work.
So with Chair Adams, do you have the certificate there?
I do. At some point, I'll shake his hand and give it to him. Yes.
I just didn't want that not to get handed off.
Yeah, absolutely. You can hang it on my wall if you'd like, but I'll officially give it to you in a second. I, I know everyone probably, a few people would probably like to say a few things. The only thing I wanted to add is, I wanted to say, you know, coming onto the commission, you know, I've had a lot of respect for a lot of the people that I've worked with on the commission, but I've learned a ton from you, Claire. And I appreciate all of the discussion that you've brought and the times that you've called, called bull on people, too, in terms of pushing discussions forward and moving issues along and stuff. And so thank you for what you've done and the leadership that you've shown the commission. So, and so I'll officially give you a handshake here and I'll let other people talk, too.
I just want to pipe in and say, I've been able and blessed to serve all of my nine years with Claire. And when I knew absolutely nothing, which is just a little bit less than I know now, you know, he coached and was very patient and was an amazing second during the year I was trying to chair the commission as well. And just had a really tremendous respect for you and how quietly zeroed in you get on the nitty-gritty and how you can take a tangled conversation that's gone on for three or four hours and very succinctly untangle it and, and bring us back to the points that we need to sort out to. we need to sort out to move forward. And you are released from bondage now, whatever will you do, and congratulations.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Well, Claire and I first met many, many years ago when we both had non-gray hair and were just out of school and working on the Everett filter plant, as I recall. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the commission and a lot of that is because of Claire. I think Michelle's very correct in the fact that some of us, me included, get kind of carried away and wander around and Claire has this ability to kind of cut us back to the right spot and to make a decision. And I'm not sure who's going to pick up that torch later on, but maybe we can get Claire back here again somehow.
Claire, as an incoming freshman commissioner, I've enjoyed your upperclassman guidance and you're a truly gentle guy and I appreciate that as well as your clarity of thought. And I've enjoyed our, I've enjoyed you as a colleague and I look forward to your friendship. Thank you.
I just briefly wanted to say thank you for the community. I mean, 12 years of service is quite remarkable, so thank you so much for all of us in the community.
It's all been said well, Claire.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for attending. I was going to try to squeeze in another planning commission meeting for Claire, but I think this will end our year, so thank you, Claire, and thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. And all the public comments, the port's work and the staff.
We have a couple more comments. We will not be meeting the first Tuesday in January, so, because of workload and such, we will meet, I believe it's the 20th, January 20th will be our next meeting and we'll have comprehensive plan items in. And tomorrow night at council, there are boards and commission appointments that are proposed, the mayor is proposing to have Claire replaced with Greg Tisdale, the alternate, so that's tomorrow night, so anyway.
Great. For the updates? Okay, thank you, everybody, we'll adjourn.